We need a second.
I'll second.
How about a quick call to room?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Cleaver?
Yes.
Motion passed, the meeting is now closed to the public. I am not, I am not gonna spend the rest of my life while I'm sitting in this job, you know, with people badgering us at every meeting and badgering, badgering. I'm not gonna entertain it, I'm not, I'm not, so, but I'm not gonna entertain it, so. And we're gonna do the best job we can. If I tell you something, you got my word on it. But we're not gonna jump through hoops, I mean, for people coming here stirring up trouble. And it's not gonna happen. I, I am it, okay. As we announced, the water meter project is underway. We have approximately twelve hundred meters to replace. We've done about ninety. About ninety has been done, so that's, that's almost ten percent. And, you know, they'll continue to do that until, until they're done. And next week's supposed to be some nice weather, so it's a good possibility that they'll go back to Route Three, you know, which is Old Burnham, and they'll be working in the alleys probably, so, excuse me. So however that goes, then you will be contacted, you'll be, you will be informed as to what we're doing. Probably the last meeting of, of February, you know, I'll be making recommendations to the board to fill the vacant collective fire department. Our five chiefs retired, we saw them first. And, and, and last night, we had an efficient, uh, energy efficient meeting at Burnham School that deal with, uh, save homes and, you know, to help you to save money on your heating bills and utility bills and, and the rich property of lead, you know, people that have young children. And the lead is kind of detrimental, could be detrimental to the children, so we're sorry they want to, uh, you know, offer any protection and safety that we can for the residents of Burnham, in particular, people that have small children, or children that's in the growing stage development. And these programs are basically free if you qualify for them. And as we go through this year, we'll have more and more meetings throughout the village. And we're gonna try to get at least four hundred houses signed up this year. And we will be suing that aggressively. I think at this time, we're gonna hear a report from Clerk Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
One other thing before we go into it. This meter here was brought to me today by Cat and that city plumbing. And it came from the east side on Green Bay, in fact, on your block, Mr. Shea. And a contractor told me this meter is fifty or sixty years old. And so we finally got it changed out.
Okay, proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I just need to make a correction that I made last meeting regarding the ethics statement filing. It was actually for myself as a clerk to submit the list of, um, individuals that need to file for the ethics statement. So that doesn't pertain to the board right now. That will come later.
Okay, thank you, Clerk, for that information. And is that it?
Yes.
Public education, health, safety, and welfare, Trusty Greer, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the following applicant to the Burnham Volunteer Friday Project, Maddie Jawalski, upon pending successful completion of a medical exam.
We would like for them to come to the next meeting unless the board wants to.
You need a motion to table a, a motion and then a second.
I make a motion to table this approval, our disapproval on the following applicant to the Burnham Volunteer Friday Project, Maddie Jawalski, upon pending successful completion of a medical exam.
There's a motion to table by Trusty Greer to table this appointment. Could we have a second, please? Except by Trusty Garcia, would I take a roll?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Cleaver?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you, proceed.
As you know, the census day is April the first. The census is very, very important for our community. We just cannot stress that enough. It's a valuable tool for improving, um, improving our community. If people in our community don't respond, we may not receive the funding needed in, in our community. It is important that everyone understands the importance of the census. We need to count every child that is in the home. Uh, we need to count, if grandmother live there, this is a federally funded program. They're, they're not trying to get in your business. We just need, the census need a total count of the people in your house. And, um, make sure you're able to do it online. If you don't want people coming to your door, you could do it online. I believe if it's in the mail too, you could do it by mail. You could do it by mail. Uh, but if you do not, if, uh, if you do not do it in any of these, someone will come to your door. So again, it's April the first, and, uh, we need to count, you don't have to be a registered voter, but we just need to count everyone that lives in your home. Your grandmother, your auntie, your nephews, whoever's in your home. Uh, this is a private information, it's not gonna go any further. And that count is very, very important. And again, census day is April the first.
And not- Trusty, if you remember that, I'd like to ask you that, the notice will be mailed out March 12th. March, uh, March 12th, whatever calculation we're doing, you know, for the total count, they'll be accurate, they'll be efficient for ten years, for ten years. So it'll be ten years before we can correct it. So if we undercount ourselves now, we gotta suffer for ten years in the furnace. And that's very important.
And not only that, they have jobs, many, many jobs. So whoever is interested in working for the census, uh, you can apply online. And I have some, um, information here for you that you can take with you. It's great, it's flexible hours. Maybe you just wanna work two days a week, or you can work five days a week. But, um, there, you can apply online. And, um, if they, if they see that they're interested in you, you will have to go through a background check and also fingerprinting. But this is a great opportunity for, um, anyone that's interested in working on the census team also. Toyota has a recall on airbags because some of the airbags are not inflated properly. There's a recall on certain models. Twenty eleven to the twenty nineteen Corolla, twenty eleven to the twenty thirteen, the Matrix, twenty twelve to the twenty eighteen is the Avalon, and the Avalon Hybrid is also. Toyota says these airbags control the computer, and they may, they may not properly protect against electric interference. And this can lead to, if you have an accident, your air, the airbags may not open properly. So if you have a Toyota, check with your dealership so that you can get this defect corrected. And as you know, uh, the trial for President Trump is in its second week. And, um, as I stated at our, at our last meeting, I was explaining about the, um, your old telephones. If you have old telephone, keep them charged up. Place one in the trunk of your car, one in the backseat of your car, or even hidden in your home. And, uh, keep it charged up because you can still call, in case of an emergency, you can still call nine one one. So keep your old phones and then place them out, throughout your home, or in your cars, and so that in case of an emergency, you can still dial nine one one. Line dancing has continued, uh, we took a break for the, um, for the month of December. We are back in full force. We started our, our session back last Saturday. It was very successful. We will continue for the month of February. Our line dance will be February the first, the eighth, and the twenty-second. And I think, I believe that is all that I have.
Thank you, Trusty Greer, for that information. Your motivation, Public Works, and Bill and Public Paper Brooks?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works has been doing general cleaning throughout the village and, um, also getting the, uh, equipment for the, uh, upcoming spring season. Uh, all serviced and ready to go. We've been lucky that we didn't, we haven't had a whole bunch of snow this winter. And, uh, that's a blessing. Also, if anyone is in need of, to get rid of old computer monitors, or keyboards, or, uh, computer towers, Best Buy takes them, and, and also staples, free of charge. Well, no, Best Buy charges twenty-five dollars for the computer monitors, but staples, they take everything free. And, um, also, Mr. Shea, I know of a few products you might could use for that, uh, wildlife product.
Thank you, Public Works.
Really?
Not on the east side, not. I've seen him over here on State Street, but I've never seen him.
I've, I've seen him around in the area. Quite a bit, yes. Late at night, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing, I, I see him.
On State Street, you see him all the time.
I mean, ordinance resolution plan and Trusty Garcia?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the potential business license for Kishel White and Taharia Randolph. Approval will, will also be contingent to have all the required documentation in order to have a business license in Burnham, in the requirement of escape of Burnham.
Now, you can stand and tell us what you have, introduce yourself, what you plan to do. And identify yourself.
I'll let her speak first. I'm Kishel White, um, I'm thirty-one years of age. I, I obtained a bachelor's degree in occupational therapy, and I also resign at Dyson, um, as a claims analyst right now. And the reason that we are here today is to propose our business plan with you guys and let you guys know how it's-
Can you speak up so everybody can hear you?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Stand over by the door.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. My name is Kishel White, I'm thirty years of age. I obtain a bachelor's degree in applied science of occupational therapy, and I also resign at Dyson as of right now, uh, as the claims analyst. And the reason for our meeting today is to give our proposal and actually tell you guys why we believe our business plan will work in you guys' community.
And my name is Taharia Randolph, I'm thirty-two years old. Uh, I have a master's degree in business management, and I am right now a senior operations manager for Dyson. Um, as Kishel pointed out, the reason why we wanna come and speak to everyone is because we wanna give you guys our proposal on why it's beneficial to open up a before and after care service in your community. Sorry, guys, I'm a bit nervous.
Could you explain in detail what it's about, the public?
Yeah. So that's, um, so if you guys would like to, we have-
Miss White, would you like to give the proposal to the board members?
Yes, yes, I would be glad to ask if we can.
You can go ahead and be talking.
Okay. So just to give you guys a bit more information too. So our mission, our mission is to provide children with an educational, friendly, and safe environment while promoting teamwork, while promoting teamwork, uh, sorry, I'm a little nervous. While promoting teamwork, leadership, and critical thinking skills. Um, so we went ahead and took a look into the community that we're looking to service, and we looked at, that basically, there is a strong need for before and after care service for children, uh, most notably in the African-American community. Um, so we went ahead and also looked at the demographics. So based off of the two thousand census bureau from what we were able to pull, the community has about fifty-four percent African-American, thirty-four percent Caucasian, seventeen percent Latino or, um, Hispanic descent, and seven percent other races, along with a mixture of a few other races, right? Um, so if we take a look at the African-American community, a lot of times, the parents, they say that they want their children to be involved in after, after-school programs, as well as before care. This helps to give the parent a peace of mind. I know I am a product of after care and before, um, care facility. So a little bit of background in regards to why we wanna be more socially responsible and give children a better, um, better access, is that, one, I'm a foster child, and I was born, um, under drug influence, right? But I was placed in a loving home, and my mother, she made sure that she put me in before and after care services, and that is what I believe helped to propel my, um, I'm so nervous for guys, thanks. But, uh, and look, I have memes all the time, right? But, um, that's what helped to propel, um, my, my, um, social skills, you know, and my, my act, my, um, ability to wanna be able to learn more as well. So the advantages of a before and after care is that it does help to promote, um, that social skill. It helps to improve those skills that a lot of us may not have, right? Um, it also helps to improve the grades, kids wanna learn more also, as long as they're in an environment that can help to teach them these different skills. And as Kishel pointed out, both of us, we're professionals, you know, and I'm a mother of three children as well. So three daughters, and with all the information I'm able to, um, give to them and show them that basically you can do whatever you wanna do in life, they're straight A students, so.
And as she pointed out as well, I am a mother of one, sorry. Um, and a little bit of background on me, I am a person who, well, I am a child who grew up without a father. My mother's incarcerated, but I did not let my past determine my future. I didn't stop there. So my passion is supporting to other children what I have. Um, and by doing that, we also decided to give you guys a head-to-toe protection plan, how we're gonna keep the parents, well, the children safe. So while parents are away at work, school, or whatever it is that they're doing, they're absolutely sure that we're taking care of their children because that's something that I look for as well. Um, we are keeping our children safe is our number one priority. We, uh, decided that we would do a routine check daily, a safety check. Basically, we will say, we will inspect the vehicles that we will be transferring children in day, on a daily basis. We will also make sure there is no hazardous material around the facility where the children will be located when they are in our care. And we also will do safety checks for each outlet, making sure everything has covers on it so no one has to worry about that. Um, we also wanted to touch bases on transportation, on what us, what would set us apart from different maybe centers, because we're not daycare center, we're just like before and after care. Um, what would set us apart is certain families, they want this service, and they need to get certain places, but they don't have the extra income to actually pay for transportation. Um, so our, our contributing factor would basically be royalty tax. We'll offer free transportations to all children and families that are enrolled in our program. Um, and transportation will be given during hours of operation. Our hours of operation so far, we're looking at five AM to nine o'clock AM. We're closed from the hours of nine and three, picking back up during school hours from three to five, three to eight, I'm sorry. And during this time, we also will have licensed and experienced drivers transporting children. At the moment, it will be me and Taharia ourselves.
Question here, um, so, do you have your state license yet?
Well, with this, that what we're doing for before and after care, you don't have to have a state license. We're doing a license exam because we have family and children under thirty, uh, under thirty children. So we don't need a license exam from childcare for this. Yes, it's a license exam.
What age brackets are you?
Retiring, ages six to twelve.
Doesn't say that in here.
I'm sorry. I'm very sorry about that. School-aged children.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
You know, but, uh, did you incorporate yourselves yet?
Not as of yet, we wanted to speak with you guys and get your insight before we actually went ahead and incorporated ourselves, so we can-
Right.
Have you had any experience in doing this before?
Yes, yes.
Do you have references?
Yes.
Do you have resumes as to your qualifications?
I don't have my resume on me, but-
I mean, I'm just asking. You're asking-
Yes.
This village board, in essence, to, uh, and, and, and don't get me wrong. I, 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 I don't wanna discourage you, and in fact, I think you got a really worthy cause here. But you have to cross your Ts and dot your Is. And, you know, this board is gonna take a risk, give you a license, and you're telling me, everybody else I know has to have a license, has to be certified. So, and you, you may have fallen in the assumption, I don't know anything about, but I'll learn. The point is, uh, put together your application with everything so that this board can examine it. And if they have any specific questions about it, we have to, we're giving a license to, which I think is a noble area to take in here. I'd rather see, and I think this board and the community would rather see additional daycare places. I, I don't even know the location where you wanna go. It doesn't even say it in here. So, I mean, you're asking the board to jump in the blind, is what I'm saying. It's gotta be, uh, some more specifics.
Okay.
And I have a suspicion, because the mayor just whispered in my good ear, that if you wanna go over in a strip mall, and anything over there is better than what was there. With a twenty-four seventy.
Twenty-four seventy.
We had one there, but once before, they did the same thing. Although we had one that was before and after.
And I think that's great.
It was by Wills, right? It was over by Wills.
And sorry, I cut. Trusty Greer was, it looked like she was anxious to ask a question.
Oh, well, I was interested in what type of funding would you be depending on? Or would you be taking state, state, uh, fund, fund this other charity?
So you said you all would be, uh, working at the facility, but you have full-time jobs?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so.
And a work then?
And a good thing is she's my boss, so I'm boss, so. Um, being a senior operations manager, I have a lot of flexibility and, um, actually able to be remote as well. So that's something that's working out, just being remote. And as she stated, uh, our, our operations are from five AM to nine AM, we're closed, and then stacked up and running at three PM to, um, eight PM as well. Eighteen, fluctuating, do both.
I understand laws have changed and been变了, but I, I, I do know that the number of children for a facility is by the square footage. So how many children do you anticipate having in your facility?
So when we went down to the state, to childcare, we are able to, as long as it's less than thirty, that's because we're not a daycare center. We're just the before and after care, this is not a center at all. So this is pretty much, we're picking children up with our certifications and getting licensed and everything for that, and we're taking them to their local school. And after school, after hours, they're able to come to our facility. We offer an extra homework assistance if needed. Um, we have access to electronic, uh, computers, iPads, and printers, and anything in that area. So no more than thirty.
You all have to do a background check and, uh, fingerprinting.
Yes.
I'll tell you, I'm gonna make a recommendation to the board. If we table this into the next meeting, then maybe you all can meet with the chairman, maybe we can give you some pointers, so we can kind of get this together. You know, and where to be more, and recognize things. So our next meeting, if we're ready, and then also be a sample.
Okay.
Young ladies, young ladies?
Yes.
If you could remain after the meeting for a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We need a motion. We don't need a motion.
So I need to motion to table, uh, the potential business license for Kishel White and Taharia Randolph.
Motion report by Trusty Garcia, and your second by Trusty Cap. Would Clerk take the roll, please, to table this?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia? Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Cleaver?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Do you have anything else, Trusty Garcia? Okay, fine, that's Trusty Cap, he got a lot.
Yeah, let's see. Start with discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of last month's bills and of the outstanding unpaid bills.
Thanks for that emotional quote by Trusty Cap. To authorize the payment of last month's bills and outstanding bills, if you have a second?
Thank you.
Second for Trusty Richardson, would Clerk take the roll?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia? Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Cleaver?
Yes.
Motion passed, proceed, Trusty Cap.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the renewal of Workman's Comp Insurance Premium Policy, period of one one twenty through one one twenty-one of the IPRF Illinois Public Risk Fund for the total annual amount of hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, the twelve monthly payments of eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Last year's annual premium was ninety-four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So I make a motion to approve the, uh, Workman's Comp Insurance Premium.
And before we proceed on that, you said a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So the village of Burnham, being a municipal government, have lots of expenses coming to attend to. So we need a second on that.
Any second, fine.
Would Clerk take the roll?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia? Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson? Trusty Cleaver?
Motion passed, proceed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the Village of Burnham Insurance Liability Umbrella Renewals, which totaled two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars, of which a deposit of forty-five thousand four hundred and one dollars and eighty-five cents was required at the time of the renewal, leaving the remaining balance of one hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents, which is placed on a commercial premium finance agreement that is financed with the AFCO at a rate of five percent for then monthly payment of nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, and on the authorization of the village, of the clerk of, the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal agreement, last year's premium was two hundred and thirty dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Any questions for the board on that?
Do I have to read all the companies, companies involved in the umbrella?
No, it's just there for information.
Okay, that's just, okay, 'cause it came up with the total.
Any questions?
I think we'll make a motion to approve the umbrella renewal, which totals two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars, and the monthly payments.
Nineteen thousand-
Nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, there's a motion to vote by Trusty Cap to approve this insurance plan for two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. Uh, we need a second, please.
Second.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Cleaver?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Park and Recreation. Republic Intelligence, Trusty Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have started, um, replacing the old water meters in District One and District Two. Most of our few residents that have had their meters changed have said it's been very quick, fifteen to thirty minutes. And, um, if you received a letter asking you to call in and schedule an appointment, we would appreciate it if you would do that, that'll help us to get the meters changed. Because we need you all to let us know when it'd be good for you, for us to come in and change. And when you have to turn your water off while it's being changed, so. It is in progress, and, um, it's coming to the other areas soon.
Mine took twenty minutes, by the way, and I did call help, they told me, told them what a good job the guy did. His name was Rodney, and I know other residents have called too, so I wasn't the only one. At least Rodney's had a few other compliments.
I'll get probably a little raised in the back.
I think Mike probably said that's what he should be doing, but, I mean, he was nice. He cleaned up there for himself. He put little boobies on his, you know, boots to keep the floors clean and-
And, uh, and I think the clerk has mentioned for the record that once we get, uh, you know, all these meters changed out and, you know, we'll be building on a monthly basis, on a monthly basis, so if we had to speculate, I go by summertime, I guess. I mean, that just happened that, but we'll be building on a monthly basis, and, uh, it'll probably be a lot better, a lot. Mr. Park and Recreation, um, Trusty Burner, she's not here. She's not feeling well today. We're gonna be installing a new swing set, uh, at the Top Lot Park, Park, at one hundred and thirty-nine in Hoxsey, so that'll probably be in a couple of months. They came in last fall, but, uh, I instructed them not to install it because it was too late in the season, and kids were not gonna get a chance to enjoy it, so we just decided to wait up for spring to do that. We had a presentation of petitions. Could we ask for a moment of silence from, um, from Ms. Darlene Hunter's family?
Let me take this one, because in the last two weeks, we had three residents from the east side that passed away.
Okay.
So, and I know all three, but Sandy Doe, which was less than a couple of weeks ago, I'm sure she was in her seventies and lived in her Burnham pretty much her whole life. Darlene Hunter was probably also in her seventies and she lived in Burnham her whole life. And Mrs. Bannock was ninety-four and she lived in Burnham for seventy years. So, I'd like to, we can take a moment of silence for all three of them, the women that have been longtime residents. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business? If there any new business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. There's a motion approved by trustee Garcia to adjourn, can we have a second?
Second.
Please take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes. Motion passed, mean to adjourn, thanks for coming.